Excellent. So, you know, the purpose of the meeting, just to recap now that we're recording, was to have a conversation around after-school care as provided by Seacoast Y at the Stratum Memorial School. There were some emails flying around in terms of, you know, how has this impacted us, our cohorts and everything else? We thought it would be best to have a public meeting to go through and discuss it. So I guess either Esther or Kate, do you want to just sort of share with us what the plans were and, you know, sort of where this is coming from? And then, yeah, I'll open up to the board for any further conversation.
Sure, I can start with the history. And then Kate, if you have any specifics you want to add in, does that sound good? So Chris Andruski and I have been meeting with the childcare providers since June, which was the Y, Great Bay Kids, other various smaller Exeter Day School, just anyone that was providing an option for our kids to attend either school-age programs when we went remote, and we went remote this fall, trying to prep for that. So, working to find space, et cetera. Our smaller places have filled up pretty quick, like Exeter Day School and stuff. So we opened up Lincoln Street and the Tuck Learning Center to run, Great Bay Kids runs out of Lincoln Street, which they normally do, that's who they usually have for before and after-school care. And then the Tuck campus let the Y spread out. We have classrooms above us on the second floor of the SAU office, five classrooms. And since their campus is normally on that same area, only at the other end, they moved into the classroom settings. Anyone that does that is now, in the past, has to adhere to all the safety protocols that are in place for our school programs, for our community care centers. So I think I just want to say that again really slowly because people get confused. The community care centers are the options that are running in our schools with school staff for the remote learning portion of the day, or to deliver specific services. The childcare community partners are people like the Y, Great Bay, Cornerstone, Exeter Day School, those schools that offered some full-day school-age programs that they normally wouldn't offer during the school year. So that's the difference. Really, community care centers are school employees and the community care partners are separate entities that are run by those entities, or those vendors, if you will. So in talking through it, the governor, as you know, deemed childcare centers as essential to working parents, et cetera, and opened those up with regulations such as childcare centers, et cetera. So that's why we were able to offer that opening within the Tuck and Lincoln Street as a vendor, where they weren't really falling under the visitor policy. Because in talking with the commissioner and through the governor's messaging that childcare was essential for folks to get to work, they needed that service. There was monies provided from the state directly to small businesses such as childcare facilities to operate and be up and running as long as they followed the health and safety protocols. The folks that are in our schools are following our safety protocols, so not the childcare safety protocols, which are slightly different than ours, meaning SAU 16. For example, both the programs that are using the Tuck and Lincoln Street have six-feet masks at all times, et cetera, except during lunch, they have to be seated, you know, in their cohort, those kinds of things. So they're cleaning, they close earlier than they normally do now, about a half an hour earlier, so they can deep clean. Our custodians then go in per usual and deep clean. They're isolated to one area of the buildings in both places. So that's how we've been operating the school-age options for parents that are working while we're remote. I see the kitty behind you, Carissa. So in the course of our switching to offering the hybrid or the alternating day, obviously, our community care centers don't operate any longer. Remember, those are the ones in school with school personnel, because those personnel are now running school during the week. So the question has come up, are we going to offer our normal, quote-unquote, "normal" after-school programming, so that parents are working, their students will still have that care at least till 5:30? Again, Chris Andruski and I, meeting with those people, Chris, the past couple times, said that we knew that they would be at Lincoln Street, because that program was already there. It would not be a continued, that program's going to be continuing. Tuck Learning will be continuing again for parents, even on the alternating day now, that's a distance learning day. They don't have a place to go. So those programs will still be offering that school-aged programming for those parents that don't have an option for childcare on the alternating day. Or they may still choose to use it if they chose remote, and they're not home. So those options are still there for those two programs. What we were hearing from parents, there was a need for at Stratum, and this is Kate, where you can clarify, I think you got some questions around, will there be an after-school program? And that's where the conversation started with Stratum. And I assumed, which was incorrect, that that would be still considered a vendor, an essential vendor, as we've been considering it with our other districts. And then when I sent that email, realized that maybe that wasn't the case in what the board wanted to do. So that's why I recommended having this meeting. So Kate, I don't know if you can speak to the more personal Stratum piece?
We did have a few families reach out, mostly the families that had had students at the CCC to see if there was options for those children. And at the time, I actually had not been, had not had a conversation with the Y, because at the beginning there, they didn't have a program for our kids at Stratum. And then they must have listened to the Stratum School Board meeting in October, and so they reached out after, because I had said at the board meeting that we did not have those programs available. So they reached out after and said they were going to send out a survey to our families to see if there was any interest. So that survey went out, I guess, two weeks ago or so, I would say, maybe, does that sound right, Erin? I think it was about two weeks ago, to see if there was an interest. And then obviously, what came out of that conversation was, you know, what does it actually look like in terms of meeting all the safety requirements of the guidelines? And then some conversations about how hard we're working to keep our cohorts small, and what that would mean if they were in, in fact, different cohorts in the afternoon during a Y program. So Esther and I kind of communicated a little bit, like, oh, this is, like, where does this, does this qualify as an educational program? Does it qualify, like, where does it fall? And really, ultimately, it's in the board's purview to make that decision. And so it just made sense for you guys to sort of toss that around.
I have a question. It looks like Eric's on mute, and maybe he had to walk away or something. But have they, have they created, like, a how-to, how they would envision operating this program at SMS?
So I can speak a little bit to that. I don't want to take too many liberties, because I don't know all the inner fine workings, but I did have conversations with Topher and Kim. They envisioned small cohorts of nine with an individual staff member that's the same staff member every day. The cohorts are the same every day. They're maxing out, they anticipated maxing out around 30 students because of staffing needs at this time, although they were doing, I think, some job fair or other searches for additional employees. But they envisioned maxing out at 30, they would keep the cohorts at nine. They actually call them cabins, and that's because that's the language they use for their summer, their summer program. They would, of course, six feet, you know, they, and I will be honest, the after-school program, they spend a good deal of time outside. They don't really spend too much inside unless they're doing some academic work or supporting some of the kids in their academics. And they would be, you know, they're going to be using the gym was what they anticipated using for space, because we don't typically use the gym every day. And then using outdoor space, again, parents wouldn't be allowed in the building, because they would be considered visitors. So they would have their, they have like a doorbell system to, for pickup if they are inside, because it's raining, or it's, you know, the 5:30 end of the day time. I don't know if I have a lot of other details. I don't really want to speak, I don't really feel like I feel comfortable with the inner stuff. That's kind of the stuff that they shared with me, and I don't want to make any assumptions beyond that.
Do kids wear masks, do you know, in these after-school programs? So these are masked all the time, except for when they're outside, or even when they're outside?
So the thing about outside, and it's even what we're doing at school, is if the kids want to be able to play, like, on a structure, then maintaining six feet is really, really difficult. So then we keep our masks on. But if they're running out on the field where they can easily maintain distance, they can take their masks off. It really does depend on what they're doing outside, Cheryl, sort of determining whether or not they have their mask on. But inside, absolutely.
But these are different cohorts than the cohorts they have in school?
Yep.
But they're all, but they're within a grade, right? So like, the second graders are together, or up to, is it kindergarten up to two, something like that? I know what, how it was when my kids were there, but I'm just wondering how they're doing it now.
I don't have those details, but when we did talk, they said that they would be cohorts from different classrooms. So I would not make the assumption that it would be like all K kids together, or all firsts. I would not make that assumption.
Yeah, I anticipate it's the same group of nine, but it could be a mixed group, at least. I'm anticipating that, just like the kids that have to ride the bus get mixed with a different cohort of 22 than they do when they're in school, and that's not by, separated by grade level. So I would anticipate it would be similar mixing.
Especially with siblings, they would keep them in the same cohort.
Okay. And you mentioned about the way, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
No, no, finish, finish. Trust me, I have my list, too. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just, like, a stream of consciousness. So the parents, I mean, I'm familiar with that system, where they come inside, and then they ring the bell. So there is that back corridor where the bathroom is for little kids, for the kids. And they're supposed to wait there.
They won't be using that, Cheryl. They won't have access to that, because it's literally in the gym with the gym bathrooms, and that's it.
Yeah, I can speak to how they're, how they're doing at the SAU, the Tuck Learning Campus that's up a set of stairs. They actually have a person outside, the car drives up, they do the health screening. Then, once they've done the health screening, if the student passes the health screening, they take that student, they walk the student up, get them, and then they come back out. The same thing happens at the end of the day. They walk the student down outside the building and deliver them to the car. The parent never gets out of the car. So I, again, I'm anticipating it would be a similar system, because it's the same program.
Okay. That I think I would feel more comfortable with, because when my kids were in that, you know, program, they learned to recognize you, they let you in, and then you could wander all over the place to get your kid who left their toys, da-da-da-da-da. You know, it's, it's a bit of a free-for-all at pickup. So if they nail that down, I feel better about it. Okay. Carissa, your turn. Sorry. I mean, I had others, but go ahead.
No, finish yours, please.
Um, no, go ahead. Those were my big questions. That's good.
So I guess my biggest concern is, is to be consistent in what our expectations are. And our number-one expectation, when we talked about that basketball thing, is we are trying to keep these kids in small cohorts. And this isn't consistent with what we were established in the beginning. And I think that parents, I mean, so that's number one, one of my concerns. My second concern is, is how do we know kids are desperate for socialization? And that is actually a great opportunity for kids to be socializing. How can we ensure that kids aren't using that as a avenue to socialize, and parents signing them up? Third of all, I would like to know who's going to be enforcing and overlooking that these standards and protocols are being put into place. Because I have made, as a parent, I've sat and waited for my child at a program by the Tuck Center, and I have seen children who are not following the six-feet standards. I have seen children who are sitting right next to each other not wearing masks. And that is concerning to me, because I understand that it's difficult, but there are a lot of kids, and there are not a lot of staff to enforce a lot of protocols. So how are we going to monitor that and enforce that?
We're not, Carissa. It's the same thing we're asking parents to do about traveling, and it's that whole community. We're trying to do the best we can as a whole community. And I think, you know, obviously, if we get, I know at Lincoln Street, if someone reported something to the principal, he would go down, and we had a meeting and said, hey, remember, you have to follow our protocols, and that kind of thing. So obviously, we address it if someone brings it to our attention. But we wouldn't be monitoring that. It would be, again, it is a separate, it's like a vendor. It's like when they deliver food into the kitchen, because it's essential to have the food there. I don't, I don't know where that guy's been. I don't know if he's traveled outside. You know, I have to trust that, that those delivery vendors are trying their best to keep everyone safe. So
It's just a tough pill to swallow when it's under the SMS roof, and our job is to kind of overlook that. And I think that is something important to keep in mind. With that said, do the parents who are not sending their children, if there should be exposure at this after-school activity, do you think there's going to be a little bit of resentment that their child got exposed as a result of this after-school program? Because I certainly would be upset, because I'm trying to follow the protocol as much as I possibly could. So I think that is something that we should be mindful of as we go forth in this. Those are just my concerns and comments and questions. And Sarah, all yours.
Yeah, I'm with you. You know, just speaking from being in a school that's been operational since August, I can tell you that staff is your most valuable resource right now. And what's going to happen inevitably is that someone is going to test positive in this after-school, and it's going to be a trickle-down effect, where it's going to affect staff members, and they're going to have to be out. And the whole point of us waiting this long was so we could operate and keep it in these cohorts and stay operational. We are going to cripple ourselves if we start mixing cohorts, because that means many, many, it's domino effect, many more people are going to have to quarantine. So that's where I am. I'm okay if they socialize, if they want to use a like, but I just don't want to see us be in a position where we're remote after a couple weeks after working so hard to get this going.
I have another question. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Do we know the way that the Y sent out?
Pardon?
I'm sorry? Do we know the results of the survey that the Y sent out? Do we know how many? Emily said yes.
I don't know the results of the Y survey.
I know.
And what about the cleanup?
Aaron?
Sorry, go ahead.
A little delay, sorry. I think in the, the results of the survey was enough parents that were interested, interested, didn't, you know, make a commitment, but interested in considering it for them to move forward with creating a flyer that we have not sent out, because we wanted to have this conversation, to offer it. I know they were working to hire additional staff, again, not just for this, that, you know, there are other, they're not just servicing SAU 16, they're servicing Hampton, they have many, many different programs in our surrounding areas also, that are in those, I don't know where they are, whether they're in schools, or whether they're in, you know, a town hall, or whatever. But so I think they were pursuing it, because they felt like there was an interest. However, I know Topher did share with us that they, in another, not in SAU district, but in another district, there was what anticipated as a high need, and then once they had it up and running, they got like 20, I can't remember what he said, Kate, but not, not nearly.
I think it was like, they thought it was going to be 25, and it ended up being five, or so, the big difference between what, who showed interest and who actually did it.
Yeah.
I don't know what SAU was either, Esther.
But anyway, so I think the survey is kind of iffy anyway, because parents, it's an opportunity to say, yeah, I'm interested in this. But as we know, then making that commitment and doing it is two different things.
They sure are. They sure are.
Okay.
You go for it.
This goes back, Carissa made me, sorry, this is my first question, and I didn't think to ask it, actually, and Carissa prompted it with her comments. Would this be open to kids who are only in school that day?
Okay, yes, it's just aftercare. So it would be 2:30 to 5:30. It usually ran until 6:00, but they were closing, if it's running, they would close at 5:30, so they could have that half hour to deep clean.
And nothing in the morning?
Correct, no before-care.
So if a child's learning at home, they can't be dropped off after?
Oh, I don't, I don't know that. I'm sorry. I thought you meant, yeah, I don't know if parents, I don't know if anybody filled out the survey saying, we would like it for afternoon care, even if our child wasn't there during the day. I don't know that answer, Carissa.
I guess, I guess I would want to know if that was, that was an option. Cheryl, is that kind of what you were thinking?
Well, yes, that, and, you know, the Monday, Wednesday kids wouldn't be mixing with the Tuesday, Thursday kids, because for the socialization issue. And I could see this being attractive, so that kids get some socialization. And that totally is a train wreck, right? I mean, if parents want to socialize in small groups with their kids in their yard, that's the, you know, that we can't control that. But I wouldn't want to create an environment where we say, let's go for it. That's great, because it's not. That's a, that's a mess at this point. Okay. This is not easy, is it? So I want to ask Sarah, you've had kids in classrooms and stuff going on. What, what is the reality of, you know, mixing cohorts? What's happening in that environment in schools, you know?
Yeah, thank you for asking. So I'm in Timberland. We started out using a hybrid cohort model. The school board was very insistent that we get kids back to school. So we started back four days a week and mixed everybody up. And now we are going remote. We're pivoting and going remote. We've had so many COVID cases, children, teachers, that we're, I mean, 70% of our staff was out last week in our building. It was not operational. And that's, that's the truth. That's what's happening. I'm seeing it. And it's this, again, to use the word, the expression, it's a domino effect. And classes, even though we're trying to contain classes, the classrooms are closing down, but there are also adults that are working in other classrooms. So then they're removed, they have to quarantine. So it's just this messy affair. So if I can give one piece of advice, like, keep it simple and keep those cohorts tight, so you can keep operating. And I don't know if the Y is worth it. I hate to say that. I know families are already so upset with us. And I know it. And we're all making sacrifices. And, but this is not a smart idea, because it's the betterment of the good here. We need all of us to be back in school.
I think the main point is consistency. Consistency, like Sarah said, in terms of, let's be consistent and let's be consistent in keeping the kids in school. Let's be consistent in our expectations of keeping them in small cohorts. We're treading a fine line, and I think if we break here, there are other opportunities where we could break. And I think, again, we have to stay true to what we started to set in the beginning, and keep that in mind.
Well, I'll sort of double down on that, from a priorities perspective. Our priority was to get the children in school. We're just getting to the point of trying to get them in school. Before we go and open up all these other avenues, let's start there first, and prove out that we can do that before we look at it. I mean, maybe we look at, you know, hoping everything goes great for the first couple months, then you look at potentially opening something like that up, like, but from day one, let's do the basics, small cohorts, keep it that way. Let's, you know, do what we set out to do from the very beginning, and then look at, you know, where else we can help out.
I seem to recall the board saying they would revisit the visitor policy, I think, was in January. Is that what you're thinking, Eric, that same kind of timeline?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, to me, November and December are all about proving out that we can do what we set out, we were going to try and do. I mean, if we get three weeks into this, and we're having, you know, the same issues that Timberland is having, then I, or Timberland is having, I don't know, you know, now we're shutting down everything. Let's start small and build up versus trying to do, you know, more than we should have.
Well, I can share, just in Brentwood, which doesn't, you know, which has been running, they've had to quarantine grade levels, mostly because of the workforce issue, because the teachers have to travel. So they traveled to all three cohorts in some grades, and two cohorts, cohorts in another grade, because they didn't have the ability to hire additional teachers, because you got to keep the cohort small. They couldn't hire double teachers. So they chose to do that creative solution thinking to get the building open. And, you know, again, it's not, it's not in school. It's other issues coming from activities that are happening outside of school, that then a student comes in, they participated in something outside of school. Fortunately, we haven't had a transmission rate in our cohorts in school. In other words, the staff, knock on wood, haven't gotten it from the student in school. Sorry, I knocked on the counter, and they think something crazy is going on. Okay, okay, relax. They're ferocious little dogs. I'm scared. Yeah, I'm mute.
She's tapping out. She's done for the day.
Yeah, I would, I'm, my better sense says this is the wrong thing to do, which I think is where you guys are leaning to, leaning as well. But it just felt like we're not prioritizing the limited resource, which is what Sarah had mentioned, is your staff is your limited resource. And as soon as your kids start to get sick, you just expose your resource. And now it affects 10 kids in their classroom, and it affects their parents, too, right? Now, mom and dad maybe can't go to work, because they've got a kid who's got to quarantine, and they get to quarantine. And it is quite a domino effect. But I do like the idea of revisiting this, because I, I feel like we're, you know, throwing a dart at the board, and trying to make a good decision, but don't really know if there's, you know, zero risk here, or very low risk, or if this is, you know, a possibility of creating a terrible situation for us, as we're just getting started. And I know there are parents that probably would love to do this, because they don't think there's much risk for them or their families, getting sick. But it's everybody else that's But it's everybody else that's affected. So that's where my head is on this one. And it feels consistent with the no, we're not going to play basketball. We're not going to add activity. We're going to focus on getting our kids back in school for their education. We're not going to add other stuff to our building, at least not at this point.
Great. And I like the idea of January, like, let's just take a breath here and see where we land in January.
Yeah, and as a board, we can still discuss this during the December meeting, right? It's just sort of an update, but then revisit a decision at a later date. Because who knows, I mean, January may not be a good time either, right? I mean, just trying to get the high school and everything else back into, you know, that's a whole other dynamic that, you know, adds to the whole mix. But, yeah. All right, so someone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so what is your motion today?
Oh, I have to formulate that thought now.
You can do it.
Okay, so help me out here. I'll make a motion that we do not want to move forth with after school care. Period. That's it.
But we'll revisit it in January?
True, but we'll revisit it in January.
Do we have a second? I see a second from Sarah. Any further conversation?
Not about this, but I do have a question after this.
Okay, roll call vote. So, Chrissy, you're up first.
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. All right.
Thank you.
Carissa, you said you had another question or comment?
I do, just moving forth because things are so wacky. And I know that it was kind of under the assumption that this is something that would have passed. But in the future, how do we want to move forth so we can discuss these things in a public forum? And I mean, should we go at it where as we move forward, any public vendor or anything that would would? Any situation similar to this needs to be discussed? Or how does how should that move forward so we can keep on with conversations like this?
I think the board's made it pretty clear to me that you don't want anyone in the building except the school academic day until January. So I would just say no.
Yeah, let's not break the bubble.
To me.
I just wanted to make that.
Let me know.
Clear.
As the building administrator, I would love to have a just one thing that I can just be clear on. Just like, sorry, it's not available right now.
One goal, one goal.
Just one consistently.
Just one. I would I would actually probably throw a party if I could have one.
Put a sign on the door that just says no.
No, yeah, that would not go over well.
Right now, no.
To that point, Kate, are you getting requests for Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, and all sorts of other things to use the building right now or no?
I did a lot in the summer, and I just was really clear in the summer that we had a no visitor policy. And if that had changed, we would make that announcement at some point. But at this point, nothing has changed. And so I have not had any requests for building use.
Oh, I told you, I'm a Girl Scout leader. I wouldn't even begin to ask, like, it wouldn't even enter my mind to say, let me, let me go in there before school's in there. That's not even a choice.
Was it, did the building get all nice and clean sparkly after the voting yesterday?
They were there very, very late and there all day today.
I bet they were. That's what I was thinking was, this is going to be a real, they don't close till eight, right? So, and they used a lot of space.
Yep. Tim and his crew are literally phenomenal in every way. And and the town was great. They had a bunch of people there today. And, you know, everybody worked together in a big team effort to make it happen, so.
Were you able to hire the new janitor?
We've posted, we have not had a lot of applicants. We're working on it. I don't, I mean, it's a hard time. I just keep reminding myself that people are just every day making decisions that I don't think a year ago they ever thought they'd be making. And so we keep trying to be enticing and appealing because we try to be as positive and as excited to have. The other day, I was, I had a student that eloped into the woods, and it was pouring rain, and I'm covered in mud. I was like, this is the best day I've had all year. I will chase any child into the woods any day of the year if it means we can have kids in this building. It was literally like the best day I'd had in six months. It was awesome. And there were like people running in the woods with their dogs, and they're like, are you okay? I'm like, I am great.
Awesome. Doing my thing.
I was like, this is what I do. This is my biz right now.
Esther, anything else that we had to discuss today? I think that was the sole topic of the posting.
Nope, that was it. I sent you the agenda for the regular meeting, Eric and Kate, for feedback and then to get the packet out next week to everyone.
Okay, I will review that tonight. Anything else from the board?
No.
With that, need a motion to exit public meeting at 6:38.
I got it.
I see that from Cheryl. Do we have a second?
Well, second it.
Second from Carissa, roll call vote. Carissa?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone. Have a fantastic evening.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Bye.